One would please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance followed by the invocation.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Dear God, thank you for the many blessings that we enjoy. As our graduates begin the next phase of their young life, please protect them and guide them to a productive future. Direct them to be the positive change for the betterment of society. Please continue to keep our community safe and guard those who protect us. We ask that you comfort those who have suffered loss and heal those faced with health challenges. Please guide us with dedication, commitment, and humility as we serve the residents of our fine city. In your holy name, amen. Oh, Clerk Ollick isn't here. Hi Carmen. Roll call vote, please.
Markovich.
Here.
Spitali.
Here.
Kelwinski.
Here.
Torres.
Here.
Higgs.
Here.
Emerson.
Here.
Warple.
Here.
Rakos.
Here.
Vanez. Here. Let the record reflect nine present, zero absent. Moving on to reading of the minutes.
Madam President.
Yes, Councilman Spitali.
The motion to accept the minutes for May 29, 2018.
Second.
Motion by Councilman Spitali, second by Councilman Emerson, to approve the minutes of May 29th. Any discussion? Any discussion? Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Approval of claims.
Madam Chairlady, there are some additional additions to the claims and in control we'll be bringing it up, but we'll take care of that under new and unfinished business.
So, we're doing what?
Approval of claims will be done under new and unfinished business.
Okay, thank you. Okay. Councilman Torres.
I would ask for, make a motion to suspend the rules, second, so that we can bring up Resolution 18R-30.
Motion by Councilman Torres, second by Councilman Higgs, to suspend the rules to introduce Resolution 18R-30. Any discussion? Any discussion? Any discussion? Yes.
To make a motion that the entire council be put on this resolution.
Okay. So, first of all, we're suspending the rules. So, Carmen, roll call vote on suspension of the rules, please.
Markovich.
Yes.
Spitali.
Yes.
Kelwinski.
Yes.
Torres.
Yes.
Higgs.
Yes.
Emerson.
Yes.
Warple.
Yes.
Rakos.
Yes.
Vanez.
Yes. Suspension of the rules passes, nine in favor, zero opposed. Councilman Torres.
This is a resolution that, uh...
You should make the motion.
You gotta make the motion to...
Oh, okay, I'm sorry about that.
Ask the resolution.
Make a motion to pass Resolution 18R-30.
Second.
Motion by Councilman Torres, second by Councilman Higgs, for final passage of 18R-30. Any discussion?
Madam Chairman.
Yes, Councilman Torres.
This is a resolution, of course, honoring Lauren Alyssa Calvillo. Excuse me if I get a little emotional, but she was murdered in the 5500 block of Beale Street while protecting and shielding some children, guiding them, scurrying them into the house. And I asked, well, the council already unanimously asked to be the sponsor, so I asked them, please vote on this. Yes. But let me just say, if I may, do, okay. First of all, as a family is here and it's just amazing the kind of love that Lauren has generated in three years now that she has fallen. But I find it also amazing that such a person, young age, was so courageous, after having the sense of mind to react the way she did. You know, it's only common sense that when you hear gunfire, you run for cover or duck and hide, and then after that, you assess the situation and react accordingly. I know first responders, people in the military, that's how they're trained to do, but not Lauren. She just covered those kids up and I could just see her frantically scurrying them into the house. She sacrificed her life for this purpose. No hours of training, she had no hours of training, she just did it naturally. And I never met Lauren until that day at the wake, but at the funeral, she looked so peaceful and calm, and she just had a smile on her that I noticed, like a satisfaction, a smile that you might refer to that other Mona Lisa, where it just said that, at least the kids are safe. You know, we have about nine honor streets in the City of Hammond, and I know that all of them are worthy for the contribution or deed they did for the city, but none of them... Well, let me just say that Lauren is just as worthy for the, for sacrificing the ultimate price for her life. So with that, I just ask my colleagues to vote unanimously to pass this resolution. Thank you.
Madam President.
Yes, Councilman Higgs.
First of all, I'd like to send my condolences to the family and the loss of your beloved loved one. I would like to have that resolution read in its entirety, if we could, please.
Carmen, before you read that, there was a motion by Councilman Spitali to make the entire council a sponsor of the order...
Second.
If you would, please.
I second.
And a second by Councilman Warple. Thank you very much. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Carmen, if you would, please.
Resolution 18R-30, resolution recognizing and honoring Lauren Alyssa Calvillo and designating the 5500 block of Beale Avenue as Honorary Lauren Alyssa Calvillo Memorial Avenue. Whereas, the common council finds that Lauren Alyssa Calvillo was only 16 years old when she was murdered on the porch of her home in the 5500 block of Beale Avenue in Hammond. At that time, she was protecting the lives of five young children from a gang member who fired 40 rounds of bullets. And whereas Lauren Calvillo was born May 24, 1999, at St. Margaret Hospital in Hammond. Because the doctor had previously advised her mother that she would never be able to have children, the family believed that Lauren was a miracle baby. And whereas Lauren was raised on Beale Street in Hammond, she lived down the street from her grandparents, Joseph and Martha Hubbard, lifelong residents of the street, she attended school in Hammond, Lafayette Elementary School, Edison Elementary School, Scott Middle School, and Hammond High School. And whereas Lauren did not always have an easy life, she was a fighter her entire life. When she was only one year old, she was diagnosed with cancer. She was treated at Children's Memorial Hospital in Chicago with chemotherapy and steroid. She emerged victorious when she was three years old. Later, she was victimized by bullies in school. She faced a constant battle through her younger years. Her mother lifted her spirits and helped her see the beauty she had within herself. Lauren became a better person because of the trials she faced at the hands of her bullies. She became more confident in the face of ridicule. She was constantly vigilant and helped others around her who faced similar circumstances. Whereas Lauren was a young woman of faith, she knew God at a very young age, by the time she could talk, she was already saying nightly prayers. She and her brother had a very close bond. She loved him and he loved her. She looked after him and was her brother's keeper. And whereas Lauren had a passion and love for brothers during her short life, she had a special place in her heart for both children and for the elderly alike. She spent much of her time with younger children in the neighborhood, playing with them and looking after them. She had a soft heart for the elderly and spent many weekends and evenings acting as a caregiver to the elderly. And whereas Lauren heroically sacrificed her life saving others, June 29, 2015, Lauren was enjoying a warm summer evening on her front porch with young friends and cousins. Then a gunman opened fire at the end of the block, spraying Beale Street with over 40 rounds of ammunition. Lauren shielded her young friends and cousins with her own body. As she was saving the lives of the children, she was fatally shot. Whereas Lauren Calvillo is commemorated at Wicker Park with a tree planted honoring her as a hero for saving the lives of five young children as she fell to her death. Lauren is a hero and will be remembered as a hero, and her memory will never die. Whereas, the common council finds that under these circumstances, it would be appropriate to honor her heroism by designating the 5500 block of Beale Street where Lauren lived and died as Lauren Alyssa Calvillo Memorial Avenue. Therefore, be it resolved by the common council of the City of Hammond that the City of Hammond honors and recognizes the contributions of Lauren Alyssa Calvillo and designates the 5500 block of Beale Avenue as Lauren Honorary Lauren A. Calvillo Memorial Avenue.
Thank you, Carmen. Is there any discussion? Any discussion?
Madam Chairman.
Yes, Councilman Torres.
Wait, still after the ordinance, I mean, the resolution passed, do I have to ask if there's any comments from...
I think it would be appropriate for...
Right now?
Yeah.
Okay, I make a motion.
Yeah, but it is a pass.
Resolution first, okay.
Okay. Okay. Carmen, roll call vote, please.
Markovich.
Yes.
Spitali.
Yes.
Kelwinski.
Yes.
Torres.
Yes.
Higgs.
Yes.
Emerson.
Yes.
Warple.
Yes.
Rakos.
Yes.
Vanez.
Yes. 18R-30 proudly unanimously passes, nine, zero.
Madam Chairman.
Yes, Councilman.
Is it appropriate now to make a motion?
Yes, please.
Make a motion to open the floor for, I know Ollie, the mom, is here, and if she would like to speak.
Second.
Point of order.
Family members.
Councilman Higgs.
Madam President, we need to suspend the rules.
We're already under suspension.
Okay.
Thank you. Please approach.
First of all, I'm honored. I am honored, I'm sorry, excuse me, but I'm honored that it meant so much to Pete Torres and Dave Warple and all of you, to think enough of my daughter and not forget her as the hero that she is. It is true that I was told I would never have children, and Lauren was my miracle child, and I live with that pain every moment of my life. Lauren was a cancer survivor. She fought all her life with bullies, it's true. I don't want my daughter's death to be in vain. I want something to be taken out of her life. I want people to remember, to be good. I don't know what I can do to stop the gangs or the violence, but I want it to stop. I've fought ever since Lauren died in her honor. I've done everything I can and then will continue to do to put my name out there to stop the violence. And I also want to say that Lauren is not the only hero. There are many heroes, and they are in this room right here that survived that day. Will you please stand up if you were there that day? Please stand up. Brandy, you were my hero. I love you. You laid right next to Lauren that day.[996.01][996.01](applause) And she is a surviving hero, along with many others that survived that day, and to Chris, and to Chris White's family. He is a hero as well. He's in heaven as well. But we will not forget that tragedy that happened that day, the tragedy that changed the life of Beale Street forever. With this being her honorary street, Lauren, I want that to be a street where it's welcoming and that we don't forget Lauren and that we remember to honor everyone, not just Lauren, but all of us, and to keep peace. It means a lot that her name is, will hang on a street, that's for sure. I just am at a loss for words. I thank Frank Marvin. Frank, thank you. I know you've been there since day one, and I thank you for all your love and your support in the community as well. And if there's anyone else that would like to say anything, I just am overwhelmed. I am at a loss for words, and I'm so gracious, and I just want to tell you all that I appreciate, I appreciate the support, again, the love and the support and the remembrance of my daughter, Lauren Alyssa Calvillo. Thank you.
Thank you very much, and our hearts.[1084.33][1084.33](applause) Thank you. Councilman Torres.
Does anybody else want to...
If anyone else would like to speak at this time.
Thank you, guys. My name's Milt Hubbard. She was my niece. I heard somebody say that she was in a gang. She was not in no gang. She was the sweetest little girl that I do. No part in no gang. She could not be in a gang. Her family was her game, and I just wanted to put that on the record, that she was not a gang member. Thank you.
Thank you very much.[1143.01][1143.01](applause)
If there's nobody else, I'd just like to add, of course, I got all this information from Ollie, and she practically wrote this. We, our council attorney just put in, edited and put in the legal language, but it's come from a mother's, resolution comes from a mother's heart. And as far as the gang part, I verified with the police department, and they confirmed that she was just an innocent bystander, was not involved with gangs. And Ollie told me that she confirmed with Attorney General Kirsch, and he said the same things, there is no gang involved, it's just the wrong place at the wrong time. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Our hearts go out to you, and we must return to the regular order of business, Council.
Madam Chairman.
Yes.
Make a motion to both of the regular businesses.
Thank you.
Second.
Motion by Councilman Torres, second by Councilman Higgs, to return to the regular order of business. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries.
Madam Chairlady.
Yes, Councilman.
Make a motion for a five-minute recess if the family would like to stick around or if they would like to leave at this time, then.
That is a great idea. Is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Motion to resume our meeting.
I make a motion that we return to the regular order of business.
Motion by Councilman Higgs, second by Councilman Rakos, to return to the regular All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Alrighty, so, we are going to look at the approval of claims.
Madam Chairlady.
Yes, Councilman.
Move for approval of claims May 23 through June 6, 2018, for council meeting June 11, 2018, beginning with claims dated 5/30/18 and ending with claims dated 6/6/18. Claim number 3259 through claim number 3477, for a total of $2,851,141.85, I so move.
Motion by Councilman Markovich, second by Councilman Higgs, for approval of claims from May 23 through June 6. Any discussion? Any discussion? Any discussion? Carmen, roll call vote, please.
Markovich.
Yes.
Spitali.
Yes.
Kelwinski.
Yes.
Torres.
Yes.
Higgs.
Yes.
Emerson.
Yes.
Warple.
Yes.
Rakos.
Yes.
Vanez.
Yes. Claims pass, nine in favor, zero opposed. Moving on to public hearings. Do you read that or do I? Go ahead.
Resolution number R-17, a declaratory resolution of the Hammond City Council designating that a certain area of the City of Hammond, Indiana, be established as the Oxbow Number One Economic Revitalization Area to which deductions from assessed value may be requested by an applicant to the common council of the City of Hammond pursuant to Indiana Code.
Thank you, Carmen. Anyone wishing to speak on Resolution 18R-17, please come to the podium, state your name and address, and you will have three minutes.
Three minutes? I just get warmed up.
I can't set a time. I'll get ready.
Yeah, George Steyer, Robertsdale. I'm not opposed to this. I don't, that's because I probably don't know, I don't know enough about it, but I kind of sort of, it just seems, I call it the Oxbow contradiction or paradox, which, you know, take your choice, because it's so odd that we're... Rakos?
Yes.
Vanez?
Yes. Claims pass, nine in favor, zero opposed. Moving on to public hearings. Do you read that or do it? Go ahead.
Resolution number R-17, a declaratory resolution of the Hammond City Council designating that a certain area of the city of Hammond, Indiana be established as the Oxbow Number One Economic Revitalization Area to which deductions from assessed value may be requested by an applicant to the common council of the city of Hammond pursuant to Indiana Code.
Thank you, Herman. Anyone wishing to speak on Resolution 18R-17, please come to the podium, state your name and address, and you will have three minutes.
Three minutes? I just get warmed up. Yeah, George Stoyer, Robertsdale. I'm not opposed to this. I don't, that's because I probably don't know any, I don't know enough about it, but I kind of sort of, it just seems, I call it the Oxbow contradiction or paradox, which, you know, take your choice, because it's so odd that we're trying to develop or create economic development and attract corporations and I guess other commercial ventures into Hammond, and yet, and we're doing it for the purposes of building our tax base or sustaining it, and yet, you know, we're getting a get out of jail free card here and I guess we're approving or whatever it is, promoting, that's the word I'm looking for, deductions from their AV, their assessed value. I mean, I don't know enough, I mean, we have the TIFs going and, you know, that stuff is, the improvements to that, the value of, to the improvements are taken off the tax rolls, what do we have left? I mean, I fear that there's going to be this big redistribution of the tax burden away from the commercial ventures to the homeowners or anybody else. It'll be made up in fees, costs, who knows what, and I just think it'll be oppressive in the future. And so I just wondered if, you know, is there some sort of economic algorithm or something like that that justifies? I mean, we've got a few of these resolutions tonight, it seems, and again, I'm not opposed to it, I just don't know enough about it, and being that you guys are such great public servants, I just wondered if there could be some explanation as to what's going on, because I'm in the dark, I venture to say half the city, if not all the city's in the dark, and you guys keep that information to yourselves and, you know, I'm worried about 2020, I always worry about 2020. To me, this is a big hammer, and when it comes down, it's going to hurt. This city has survived one beating with the tax caps, and I don't know how we're doing with that, I mean, that's an ongoing process, so if it's going to be compounded come 2020, when everything becomes absolute and all the things that are outside of the cap are brought into the cap, that's going to be, that's going to be something. So, I just don't know how much are we giving away? I mean, is, if it's a, if it's, again, is there this algorithm to justify this, is there a payout on the end, unless a timeline on it, if any, or is it just, I don't know how to classify it, I call it like a paradox or contradiction, maybe that's just rhetoric. Anyway, so it goes.
Madam Chairwoman?
Thank you, George.
Are we allowed to speak during a public? During a public hearing?
Yeah, go ahead.
Just to answer your question, George, it's not a get out of jail free card. It doesn't matter the length of a tax abatement, we're going to collect half the taxes, no matter what the length is, we're going to collect half the taxes over whatever period of time it is. We were collecting no taxes on that property because the city owned that property. There were no TIF dollars used. It's my understanding there were no TIF dollars used to build that hotel?
No, not for the Hampton Inn, no, not at all. And I could add to it if I could speak.
Go ahead.
Phil Talon, do I have to give my address or anything, or is this just speaking? So, to answer Mr. Stoyer's question, I think it's a fair question, by the way, I think it's a legitimate question and a good one from a Hammond resident. In 2008, when the property at Oxbow Landing went up for sale, is right at the same time that we had a little recession in the United States, I'm not sure, I'm sure everybody remembers that very well. It was very difficult to get anybody to do any type of development of any kind throughout the entire city, even though, even the properties that ride off the expressway that have a huge traffic count going by on a very busy expressway. Hampton Inn was the first group to come in and actually purchase the property, they purchased it, they paid full price for it, just FYI. At the time that we had the discussion with them was the talk about, okay, we'll potentially be prepared to give you a tax abatement because we need to start spurring development at this site when nobody else was willing to come in and do anything. Now, it took several years because the owner of the Hampton Inn could not get financing for his hotel. Banks stopped loaning money back in 2008 when the recession occurred, okay? So, there was nothing going on for several years, to the point that I remember even the councilman was upset with our economic development team saying, hey, what's going on over there? It was nearly impossible to bring groups in. So, at the time, to try and push the development forward, we told Hampton Inn that we'd be willing to support a potential tax abatement, but only if they used 100% union contractors. And at the time, the owner of the Hampton Inn sat down with the business trades manager and worked out a deal and made sure that all the union contractors were very supportive of this. Now, when that happened, during that period, before they started construction, BW3s then came to the table, and they came to us and they also asked for an incentive, it was a TIF incentive at the time, and we agreed to do it because, again, I don't want to say we were desperate, but there was not a lot of activity going on, and like Councilman Warple just stated, 0% of 0 is 0, so it doesn't matter, if there's no taxes coming in, it doesn't matter what you're abating, you're still getting 0. So, at the time, we did offer an incentive to Buffalo Wild Wings, and they came in, they started construction, and that was right at the time where things started taking off. As soon as they started seeing some development occurring on that site, our phones started ringing a little bit, and then when we were going to folks and saying, hey, we've got this great site right off the expressway, we started seeing that people were actually interested. The Buffalo Wild Wings bond that we used through that TIF incentive has already been paid off, which just tells you that everything's, the increment that's coming in, in the gateway's allocation area, which is what we call it, is already doing very well and is able to pay off any debt that we potentially incur because we incentivized. The Byway Brewery received a very small incentive, I think it was somewhere in the range of $100,000, and the reason for that was because there were soil issues with the ground. When the River Park Apartments were demolished, some debris was left over, so they received a very small incentive. Holiday Inn Express received no incentive. They came in, not only did they pay full price for the property, they paid above the average per acre price for that site. So, as things moved forward, less incentives are needed, because the way we look at incentives in the city of Hammond is, but for that incentive, this project will not occur. We do not go into a project and say, hey, we want to give you money, can, will you accept it from us? We go to them and they say, what is it going to take to incentivize the project, or what will it take but for us, our help, that this project will not move forward? And we put it on them to prove that to us, that it's needed. And again, the second Oxbow Landing, this is the office complex that we have the groundbreaking for tomorrow at 2 o'clock, this is a perfect example. The last time we had an agreement with ATG, which is the group that's constructing it, I believe we gave them an incentive of somewhere around $1.7 million for the $7.5 million project. The second time around, they're building a mere office building, and they're building four retail buildings alongside of it, and it's the same exact incentive, and again, there's other factors that go into this, partially because we support union contractors and we want to get union workers working, but also because to, sometimes to bring certain types of retail to our city, we have to mitigate some of the risk that comes along with that. So, I want to be very clear with Mr. Stoyer, and like I said, I think it's a fair question, it's a very good question, we are not frivolous when we're talking with groups about coming to Hammond, but Hammond has different demographics than other cities in this area, you know, whether you want to say to the south of Lake County or whatever. If I was the economic development person in St. John, I'll bet you it's a lot easier to sit in my office and let the phone ring and let people say, oh, your average income in this area is this high, so we're just going to move in. It doesn't work that way with Hammond. We have to work hard, we have to be aggressive, we have to be proactive to bring businesses in. Took us many years to get Starbucks to come to Hammond, okay? BW3 said no for, I've been here 10 years, they said no for the first five while I was here, until we finally pushed them hard enough where they came in, and of course, they're very successful, they're doing very well. But that's how we approach it, we definitely don't look at it like, let's just offer them anything and see what sticks. We look at the numbers, we see the increment that's going to be generated over a certain period of time, we basically tell ourselves we'll never ever go, or we try never ever to go above 30% of what they're going to bring to the city, and obviously, we try and go a lot less than that if possible.
You so much, Phil.
You're welcome.
Madam President?
Yes?
I just wanted to reiterate, because I used to believe it too, that a tax abatement meant they're paying no taxes, and that's just not true. If it's a three-year, a five-year, or a 10-year abatement, it averages out to about 50% of what you would have collected over that period of time. A TIF district, I know you asked a question about tipping, the TIF districts a couple weeks ago, and it's not like we don't get that money, it's just that money stays within that district.
Sure, and I just, last thing I want to say is, we built a fire station based on the increment that came in from the gateway allocation area. We're getting a new hockey rink in this area because of increment that's coming in, but if, when you talk about 2020, we're going to sell a bond, obviously, that was approved for the Oxbow Landing, the new office complex and the hockey rink project, I mean, because of the increment that's been generated now, I mean, I would suggest that, you know, these are going to be very easy to pay off, we're always, we're going to be, as the years go on and these developments get on the tax rolls, more and more dollars are going to be coming in, and then eventually, you close the allocation area and all those tax dollars then go to the normal process, which flow through the county and go to all the different taxing entities. So, that's how it's supposed to work, and you do close the allocation area when it's time to close the allocation area, which we've done, I think, on three occasions, at least since I've been here.
Alrighty, thank you so very much. Anyone else wishing to speak on 18R-17?
Madam President?
Councilman Higgs.
The question I had is in regards to George's question for 2020, are you afraid that at that point, all the responsibility will come on the taxpayers? Is that what you're trying to say?
Thank you. Anyone else wishing to speak on 18R-17? Public hearing is now closed. Moving on to communications. Any communications?
Madam President?
Yes, Councilman Higgs.
Basically, it's more so, since the city engineer is here, I just wanted to make him aware that NIPSCO has been cutting trees down throughout my district, I don't know what other districts, and what happens once they cut the trees, they leave the logs on the property of the owners, so the city is not able to remove the tree logs from the property because it has to be in a parkway or not on their private property. So, if somehow or another you could convey that to NIPSCO, if they could possibly set the trees in a proper location so that the city can pick them up versus setting them on their property, because once you cut a bunch of logs and put them back on their property, most people can't afford to pay someone to come cut them up. But what's happening is, NIPSCO is cutting them off, and we had a bill for $79,000 on the claims this evening in regards to a number, I don't know if that was particularly it, but I think the claims were, had something to do with the trees, maybe so and maybe not, but what I'm trying to tell you is that what's happening is that they're cutting the trees and they're leaving the logs on the people's property. So, the problem is, is that people can't afford to pay someone to get the logs off their property. So, they go, I understand, you know, they don't want the trees to fall on the NIPSCO poles and cause an outage, but if you're going to cut the logs, at least have a way of taking them with you, not just leaving them on the people's property. So, maybe you can somehow or another discuss it with them, or whoever owns it, maybe it's a tree company, I don't know, but from my understanding, I've seen NIPSCO trucks and tree guys out there too, so maybe they're working hand in hand, maybe you can help with that, so that it's not an issue with people calling me all day and night saying they left logs on my property, because the city can't go on their personal property and remove the logs.
Thank you, Councilman Higgs. Is that in the form of a letter?
Yeah, that's fine.
Okay, is there a second?
Second.
Motion by Councilman Higgs, second by Councilman Torres, they have a letter sent to engineering regarding trees that are cut down by NIPSCO and they're leaving the logs. Any discussion? Any discussion? Any discussion? All those in favor? In favor?
Yeah.
Opposed? Motion carries. And next time, Councilman, we would address that under New and Unfinished Business. Any other communication? Any other communication? Communications are now closed. Committee reports, there were no committee meetings tonight, so at this time, I will read the upcoming community and crime watch meetings on Wednesday, June 12, 13th. I don't have, I think I have the date wrong here. Hold on, when is June?
That's this Wednesday.
Okay, Wednesday, June 13th, at Mount Zion Pleasant View Plaza, there will be a community watch meeting beginning at 2:00 PM, and Mayor McDermott will be the speaker. On Tuesday, June 19th, East Hammond Pullman Crime Watch will meet at the Ophelia Steen Center beginning at 6:30. Thursday, June 21st, the Hessville Crime Watch will meet at 7:00 PM at the Gene Shepherd Center. Also, on Thursday, June 21st, the South Hammond Crime Watch will meet at the Hammond Housing Authority Building at 7:00 PM. And on Thursday, June 14th, the Whiting-Robertsdale Crime Watch will meet at Calumet College at 6:30 PM. Incidentally, I have announced over the past several weeks about the light program. It is currently closed, it was very successful, we had over 100 applicants come in, so thank you all for your participation, it was wildly successful once again, and that is why community is not just about me, it's about us. Committee reports is now closed. Ordinance, third and final passage, there are none. Introduce, introduction of ordinances, there are none. Resolutions.
18R-26, a resolution of the Hammond City Council confirming Resolution Number 18R-17 that designated and established a certain area of the city of Hammond, Indiana, as an economic revitalization area to which deductions of assessed value may be requested by an applicant to the common council of the city of Hammond pursuant to Indiana Code.
Madam President?
Yes, Councilman Warple.
I move for adoption of 18R-26.
Second.
Motion by Councilman Warple, second by Councilman Higgs for final passage of 18R-26. Any discussion?
Madam Chairlady?
Yes, Councilman.
Just for the viewing audience, could somebody explain exactly where this area is? I'm sure George would like to know where this area is and what's involved in this.
Madam President?
Yes, Councilman Warple.
This is the Oxbow Number One Economic Revitalization Area, it's the property Chief of Staff Talon was talking about with the buildings just a couple of minutes ago. It's the, I didn't got my glasses, it's a confirmatory resolution of the abatement we've started.
Thank you. Any other discussion?
Madam President?
Councilman Higgs.
Councilman Warple, how long has this been in existence?
This is the first time this has been in my pocket, I mean...
Any other discussion? Any other discussion? Any other discussion? Herman, roll call vote please on 18R-26.
Markovich?
Yes.
Spitali?
Yes.
Kelwinski?
Yes.
Torres?
Yes.
Higgs?
Yes.
Emerson?
Yes.
Warple?
Yes.
Rakos?
Yes.
Vanez?
Yes. 18R-26 passes, nine in favor, zero opposed.
18R-27, a resolution of the common council of the city of Hammond, Indiana, granting waivers of noncompliance pursuant to Indiana Code with respect to an assessed valuation deduction, tax abatement, for the tangible real property of Hammond Hospitality, LCC, doing business as Hampton Inn and Suites.
Madam Chairwoman?
Yes, Councilman Warple.
I move for passage and adoption of 18R-27.
Second.
Motion by Councilman Warple, second by Councilman Spitali for final passage of 18R-27. Any discussion?
Madam President?
Yes, Councilman Warple.
I would like to amend 18R-27 in its entirety with 18R-27A. There's a few changes in the actual wording of it. I so move?
Second.
Motion by Council- Motion by Councilman Warple, second by Councilman Higgs to, uh, amend, uh, eighteen R twenty-seven, cancel that in its entirety and replace it with eighteen R twenty-seven A. Any discussion? Any discussion?
Madam President.
Yes, Councilman Higgs.
As amended in, uh, Councilman Warple, what are we amending in from the previous one?
Madam President.
Yes, Councilman Warple.
He threw me a trick question. Um, understatement of benefits, it read that identified real property improvements, and instead of that, it says attached hereto as attachment A. Um, it would be in the whereas Hammond Hospitality LLC down here. And then attachment. Attachment A is provided in the new document, I believe. Am I correct, Mr. Bodis?
Yes.
Yes. And then, hm, in the back, um, on page four or five, the line, "The city council grants an assessed evaluation deduction, tax abatement, for eligible and qualified tangible real property improvements with the abatement schedule and abatement presented percentages provided below pursuant to section seventeen B of the Act consistent with the above abatement period as it relates to the project." And then the abatement period schedule is attached that shows the graduated abatement that averages out to fifty percent of the taxes they would have paid over the ten-year period. And then in the part where it says, "Be it further resolved," right after the part of, "In a letter dated May thirty-first, twenty-eighteen, to the Mayor's Office of Economic Development," the words "attached hereto as exhibit A" were added in.
Thank you, Councilman. Did that answer your question, Councilman Higgs?
Yeah, I was clear on it, I was just making sure the public was.
Okay. Any other discussion? Any other discussion? Any other discussion? Uh, Carmen, roll call vote, please, on eighteen R twenty-seven A.
Markovich?
Yes.
Spitali?
Yes.
Kelwinski?
Yes.
Torres?
Yes.
Higgs?
Yes.
Emerson?
Yes.
Warple?
Yes.
Rakos?
Yes.
Vines?
Yes. Uh, eighteen R twenty-seven A passes, nine in favor, zero opposed.
So is that the motion to amend?
To amend, yes.
Did I not, uh, hear a vote on amending? Herman?
I, I think that was it.
That was the amendment.
That was the amendment.
Pardon me?
We need a motion to pass.
As approv-, as amended.
Madam Chair, Madam President.
Okay, so, uh, what do I need to do, rescind that vote?
No, no, Madam President.
Have another vote on the, uh?
Motion as amended.
Resolution.
I move for final passage and adoption of eighteen R twenty-seven as amended.
Second.
Alrighty, thank you very much. Okay. Uh, motion by Councilman Warple, second by Councilman, who was that?
He is.
Uh, Higgs, alrighty. Uh, on eighteen R twenty-seven, uh, A as amended, is that correct? Okay. Alrighty. Carmen, roll call vote, please.
Markovich?
Yes.
Spitali?
Yes.
Kelwinski?
Yes.
Torres?
Yes.
Higgs?
Yes.
Emerson?
Yes.
Warple?
Yes.
Rakos?
Yes.
Vines?
Yes. Eighteen R twenty-seven A passes, as amended, passes, nine in favor, zero opposed. Sorry for that confusion.
Eighteen R twenty-eight. A resolution of the Hammond City Council approving certain form CF ones as filed with the Common Council of the City of Hammond as the designating body by applicants previously approved for economic revitalization area deductions from assessed value pursuant to Indiana Code.
Um, uh, Councilman Spitali, would you mind introducing that, please?
Make a motion to accept on eighteen R dash twenty-eight.
Second.
Motion by Councilman Spitali, second by Councilman Warple for final passage of eighteen R twenty-eight. Any discussion? Any discussion?
Madam Chairlady.
Councilman Markovich.
I would appreciate if, uh, Africa Tarver would come to the podium and introduce all four of the companies that are coming here asking for these tax abatements and just introduce themselves and who they are and what they are, and maybe give the taxpayers a little bit what their business is and what they do here. This is the first time that this is being done with the city council, with the CF ones, publicly. In the past, it was just being filed and there was no follow-up. So this is the first time it's coming before the city council for these, uh, companies to come before the council for approval. In the past, it was just filed, but there was no approval by the city council as far as these CF one forms were filed. They just filed them with the office and then that was it.
No, actually, Councilman, they came before you last year.
That is correct.
And they came before you last year, and we have some people that are repeating, they came before last year.
I stand corrected.
So, Councilman, uh, are you making a motion to suspend the rules?
Yes.
Okay. Motion by Councilman Markovich to suspend the rules to allow, uh, Africa, the Director of Planning and Development, to speak on ordinance number eighteen R twenty-eight. Is there a second?
Second.
Uh, motion by Councilman, uh, Markovich, second by Councilman Higgs to suspend the rules. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
Good evening, Council. Today, you have, um, four companies that are here. They're here as part of the compliance from, for their approval, for your approval for the compliance form. These companies have received an atta-, an assessed evaluation deduction, commonly known as a tax abatement, for improvements that were done to their property. One of the conditions is that they annually have to come before the council, they have to complete a compliance form that basically says that they're in compliance to the statement of benefit forms, which you approve for the assessed valuation deduction or an abatement. The companies that you have before you tonight, and I'll ask that they come forward, and I'll let, I feel that they can best do justice, tell you what their companies do. Um, Munster Steel, we have Munster Steel here. So we have Jean Robbins here, and we just, can you just give us a little background on your company?
Uh, yes, my name is Jean Robbins. Munster Steel is a structural steel fabrication company. We have a union shop and currently have forty-two employees on staff.
Thank you. Thank you.
The second company that we have tonight is Crow's Development. Mr. Stan Cunarina, can you please come forward? You could just have.
Hi, good evening, Council, how are you? Uh, what, what is, what is, what do we want me to?
Just tell them what you do.
Uh, we are responsible for the development that's, uh, east of the Oxbow Park, uh, the retail, the industrial development that has, uh, several buildings located on the south side of, uh, eighty-ninety-four, along the Frontage Road. Uh, Team Industries, about a hundred and eighty people. Uh, we have Iris, which is another testing company, and several other good, uh, industrial tenants that have brought good commerce to the City of Hammond. Uh, we had, initially had our development, uh, resolution approved back in the early two thousand, two, three, four, and of course, as the gentleman over there stated, that once you hit two thousand and seven, things kinda put the brakes on, but, uh, it's, it's worked out very well and it's been very good for the City of Hammond. Okay?
Thank you.
Thank you.
The third will be Crow's and devel-, I'm sorry, Corellis Roofing.
Good evening, my name's Brian Enright, I'm CFO at Corellis Roofing. Crow's Roofing, uh, I believe has been in Hammond fifty-four years. They specialize in commercial roofing, they're also a, um, a union, uh, company.
Thank you. And last but definitely not least, would, would be American Stair.
Hi, I'm, uh, Peter Fitzsimmons, Vice President at American Stair. Uh, we are a metal manufacturing company that produces stairs and railing, um, and we're located at thirty-five-ten Calumet. Uh, we've bought a hundred and fifty employees, uh, at the current time.
Thank you.
Thank you. And these are the companies that are before you tonight.
Thank you. Want to return to the regular order of business?
Madam Chairlady, make a motion to return to the regular order of business?
Second.
Motion by Councilman Markovich, second by Councilman Higgs to return to the regular order of business. Um, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. So we have before us eighteen R twenty-eight. For final passage, introduced by Councilman Spitali, second by Councilman Warple. Any other discussion?
Madam Chairlady.
Councilman Markovich.
I would just like to make a comment that, uh, when Munster Steel moved over, they had a celebrity over there at their place about a year or two ago, and that person was Hillary Rodden Clinton, where they hosted her, and, uh, I welcome that they put Hammond on the map by bringing her there, and she wasn't successful, but, um, you know, she did ma-, put Hammond on the map, and, uh, it was something that, uh, you know, it's something else other than Barack Obama when he came to Wicker Park, when he was campaigning probably eight years ago and so forth, but, uh...
Barack Obama came to Munster Steel also.
Well, that one I don't remember. I wasn't invited to that one, so...
That was in Munster.
And then I guess Hillary was at Chicago Central High School too, when they were all campaigning, but, uh, no, they, they put Hammond on the map as well as all these other ones with, uh, the Steel Company coming from Illinois and then asking a lot of their employees to come ahead and move to Hammond, because some of them are traveling and some probably still travel back and forth, but, and, you know, the thing about what they're doing with our governor also, as far as the lower taxes for your companies, and as far as taxes that the employees pay, which is a lot less than what they're paying in Illinois and Chicago, so it's, it's good that they're here tonight and introduced themselves, and I thank you for that.
Thank you, Councilman. Any other discussion? Any other discussion? Any other discussion? Carmen, roll call vote, please, on eighteen R twenty-eight.
Markovich?
Yes.
Spitali?
Yes.
Kelwinski?
Yes.
Torres?
Yes.
Higgs?
Yes.
Emerson?
Yes.
Warple?
Yes.
Rakos?
Yes.
Vines?
Yes. Eighteen R twenty-eight passes, nine in favor, zero opposed.
Eighteen R twenty-nine. A resolution authorizing the Hammond Fire Department to apply for a twenty-eighteen State of Indiana administered federal grant from the State Homeland Security Program.
Madam President.
Yes, Councilman Rakos.
Move for final passage and adoption of eighteen R twenty-nine.
Second.
Motion by Councilman Rakos, second by Councilman Higgs for final passage of eighteen R twenty-nine. Any discussion?
Madam President.
Yes, Councilman.
It's a thirty-dollar reimbursable grant, uh, software purposes of preparing active shooter response kits to enable the fire department to place these kits on every, uh, apparatus vehicle they have. We need to pass the, uh, resolution so they can apply to get the money back from the, uh, federal government or state government. Uh, they're already using their own money to use to get the equipment, and then they're gonna apply for the grant.
Okay. Any other discussion? Any other discussion? Any other discussion? Carmen, roll call vote, please, on eighteen R twenty-nine.
Markovich?
Yes.
Spitali?
Yes.
Kelwinski?
Yes.
Torres?
Yes.
Higgs?
Yes.
Emerson?
Yes.
Warple?
Yes.
Rakos?
Yes.
Vines?
Yes. Eighteen R twenty-nine passes, nine in favor, zero opposed. And Carmen, that should conclude the resolutions, correct?
It does.
Thank you. Resolutions is now closed. Moving on to new and unfinished business.
Madam President.
Yes, Councilman Higgs.
I'd like a letter sent to code enforcement in regards to nine thirty-six Conkey Street, whose property's been abandoned for a number of years and hasn't, I haven't seen it on the demo list, to be, uh, torn down, so I'd like to know what the status is, because windows are broken out and the next block over there, a lot of nice homes, and the residents are complaining about the property not being upkept, so I'd like a letter go to code enforcement in regards to status of nine thirty-six Conkey, I saw.
Motion by Councilman Higgs, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Councilman Torres, they have a letter sent to code enforcement, uh, regarding nine thirty-six Conkey Street. What is the status of the building? Uh, any discussion? Any discussion? Any discussion? Uh, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Any other new and unfinished business?
Madam Chairlady.
Yes, Councilman Torres.
I'd like a, a letter sent to the engineer, but I got, uh, three items. Instead of requesting, uh, every time, I'm just gonna read item by item, if it's okay.
That's fine.
Okay, there are, uh, first of all, there are ten streets scheduled for repaving, and the residents, they know, and they keep asking me, when is, when is repaving gonna start?
So you're looking for a date? You're looking for a date?
Uh, the month or the day or something. Uh, that's item number one. Item number two, White Oak, fifty-four-hundred block of White Oak is scheduled for ornamental lights, and again, residence wants to know when they're gonna start. Item number three, traffic on Michigan, all of our, Michigan on our side, but especially between White Oak and Holman, keep getting complaints of, uh, speeding traffic. Of course, I know there's additional traffic because of the bridge, it was down, and Calumet and so forth, but this, uh, was happening even before then. If there can be something, a study of some sort that, uh, see how we can slow traffic That concludes the letter to the engineer.
Alrighty, there's a motion by Councilman Torres.
Second.
There is second by Councilman Higgs to have a letter sent to engineering inquiring about, uh, ten streets that are scheduled for, uh, repair. They're looking for, uh, date, uh, ballpark date, uh, when that work will begin. Uh, item number two, fifty-four-hundred block of White Oak is scheduled to get lights, and we're looking for a ballpark date on that. Uh, Michigan between, uh, item number three, Michigan between White Oak and Holman, uh, is there a possibility for a speed study, uh, along that street? Um, any discussion? Any discussion? Any discussion? All those in favor? Opposed? Motion carries. Any other new and unfinished business?
Madam President.
Yes, Councilman Higgs.
I see the city engineer is here, and the pothole in the eleven-hundred block of Drakker Street has been filled in, so thank you for that, but we s-, um, recently submitted a letter to your office in regards to having a over, overlay done on Eaton Street. There are a couple of ones that are in there, so I figured if we just do the street from the eighty-hundred block to eleven-hundred block of Eaton, that would probably dissolve the problem of actually what's going on over there, so if you could, uh, look into it and find out the status. And also on, uh, Waltham, they started the ornamental lighting, but they haven't completed the project as of yet, so, uh, the money, that was actually supposed to have been done last year, and they're just now getting to it this year, and so we'd like to know, uh, finished date on that, I saw.
Okay, so, there's a motion by Councilman Higgs, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Councilman Torres to have a letter sent to the Engineering Department, um, uh, I guess acknowledging that the pothole was, uh, filled on the eleven-hundred block of Drakker. Um, also wants to know if, uh, about an overlay on the eight-hundred and eleven-hundred, uh, through the eleven-hundred blocks of Eaton, uh, and, uh, a timeframe for the ornamental lights on Waltham. Uh, any discussion? Any discussion? Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Opposed, motion carries.
Madam Chairman?
Yes, Councilman Torres.
A letter to code enforcement. There's a house on eleven forty-one Roosevelt, been vacant for several years, has not been boarded, reports of vagrants getting in, and residents would like to know if it can be boarded.
Alrighty. Motion by Councilman Torres, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Councilman Higgs to have a letter sent to code enforcement regarding eleven forty-one Roosevelt, the home that's been vacant for years, and can we get that boarded up? Any discussion? Any discussion? Any discussion? All those in favor? Opposed, motion carries. Any other new and unfinished business?
Madam Chairman?
Yes, Councilman Torres.
Park, a letter to the park department, eight thirty-three Chicago. There's a dead tree on the parkway, it was overlooked with the Chicago Avenue constructions. Homeowner would like to see it torn down, taken down. If they can see what they can do about it.
Second.
Motion by Councilman Torres, second by Councilman Higgs to have a letter sent to the park department regarding eight thirty-three Chicago Street, a dead tree that was overlooked in the construction. Any discussion? Any discussion? Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, motion carries. Any other new and unfinished business?
Madam President?
Yes, Councilman Higgs.
July fourth celebration at Wolf Lake, a fun-filled all-American celebration at the pavilion. Mayor Thomas McDermott Jr. and the Hammond Port Authority are proud to announce the details of the annual fourth of July celebration at Wolf Lake. The annual nationalization ceremony will begin on July fourth at five-thirty PM at the pavilion. The Bill Porter Orchestra is guaranteed to put you a patriotic mood when you, when they perform after the ceremony completion approximately seven-thirty PM. Fireworks wraps up the evening at approximately nine PM. This is a free event, concert goes, and encourage you to bring chairs and blankets and picnic blankets. Bags may be subject to search by security, other restrictions may apply.
Thank you for that announcement. Any other new and unfinished business?
Madam Chairlady.
Councilman Markovich.
On this Saturday, the sixteenth, the Lake County Waste is gonna hold a shredding event on Conkey Street, I believe, starting at nine o'clock to one o'clock. And businesses aren't allowed to bring any paper, but residents are allowed to bring four bags to get shredded of your personal information, just for your information. And additionally, we received a copy of some legal notices that tomorrow at five-thirty, the School City of Hammond Board of School Trustees at forty-one Williams Streets is gonna have a public hearing, and is to discuss the proposed contract of Dr. Watkins as superintendent of the School City of Hammond effective July first, twenty eighteen. They're gonna hold a public hearing in which public comment is heard. The current superintendent contract will remain at one hundred sixty-five thousand, four hundred eighty-nine dollars, and all other terms and conditions of the superintendent contract will remain in full force and effect. All citizens interested in commenting on are encouraged to attend. Now, you know, we all got our tax bills, and we've all been getting calls about how their taxes went up, but the majority of that tax bill was on the school portion of your tax bill. Additionally, then, there's another legal notice, and this is all in The Times on Thursday, May thirty-first, School City of Hammond School Board of School Trustees contract with Walter J. Watkins. Duration of contract, January first, twenty eighteen, to December thirty-first, twenty eighteen. Yearly salary, one hundred sixty-five thousand, four hundred eighty-nine dollars, and the superintendent's three percent contribution to the teacher's retirement fund to be paid by the School City of Hammond.
Wow, I need that job.
Fringe benefits, automobile. When the automobile is used for personal business, gasoline is to be furnished by the superintendent. Now, you all know that Dr. Watkins has been involved in several car accidents with the school city vehicle, and we're all liable for that, so I don't know what the outcome of all of that's been. Life insurance policy of three hundred thousand dollars, a tax sheltered annuity of eighteen thousand, five hundred by the school corporation each school year. If superintendent is employed for less than a school year, an amount to be prorated. Ten days paid vacation on a two-hundred-and-thirty-day work year issued days to be paid. The thing about it is, there's another one, a regular teacher's contract for the same date. The regular teacher contract is between the School City of Hammond Corporation and Walter Watkins is a teacher. Is a teacher defined in their code of twenty eighteen, two dash twenty-two. In exchange for the teacher's services described below, the corporation and the teacher agree, now he's gonna be a teacher and he's gonna be a superintendent at the same time, I guess. He shall teach in the schools of the corporation for the school term beginning January first, twenty eighteen, well, twenty eighteen's already gone and done, we're looking at July first, and ending on December thirty-first, twenty eighteen. Oh, it's got some other things in here. The corporation shall pay for his services under the contract, a total salary of one hundred sixty-five thousand, four hundred eighty-nine dollars during your school year. So now, whether he's gonna be a superintendent or a teacher, another hundred, I'm not saying another one hundred sixty-five thousand, shall pay the amount in installments. It can be canceled and so forth. But the thing about it is, this contract here is by the teacher, which is him, and the superintendent, so he's gonna be signing his own teacher's contract, and he's gonna be signing also as a superintendent. So, being it, unless you read the legal notices or it's brought to the attention like it was to ours, there's a meeting at five-thirty at forty-one Williams Street about all of this, and if you're interested or want to know what's going on, and, you know, the next part of your tax bill's gonna kick in next year when that part for Hamp, building of Hammond High School is gonna kick in. So, but it's not the city council that did this, you know, don't blame us. I know you're calling us about your tax bill going up. It's the school city, and that's where it's going, and that's when it's happening. And, you know, comment was made about twenty-twenty, you know, about what's gonna happen there when that all happens. So I'm just, if you care, again, tomorrow at five-thirty, and, you know, it's kind of early because people don't get home from work at that time yet, but, you know, the meeting's there at five-thirty tomorrow for that public hearing, and I'm just letting everybody know, if you have time and information, you know, to go see what's going on. Thank you.
Madam President?
Thank you. Yes, Councilman Higgs.
Just for clarification, did I hear you say that he's gonna sign his contract and he's gonna be the superintendent and the teacher? How can you be in two positions at one time?
I don't know. I'm just reading what it says here in the legal notice. Disagreement is with the superintendent and the teacher. But, the school corporation president will sign off.
So I guess that's why we'll all go to the meeting tonight, correct?
We're gonna try.
Okay. Any other new and unfinished business? Any other new and unfinished business? Any other new and unfinished business? New and unfinished business is now closed. Public expression, we have one speaker, Mr. Stoya. He will pass.
I make a motion that we adjourn from this meeting.
Motion to adjourn by Councilman Higgs, second by Councilman Warple. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Everyone have a good evening. Thank you.